Recreation and Greenway Board Meeting here on July 27th at 9:03 a.m. This is a work session. And first item on the agenda is to determine a quorum. And with myself, Bob Nunnecamp, and Christina Kulp, we do have a quorum. In addition, we also have our council liaison Kimberly here as well. Next item on the agenda is the adoption of the agenda. And this was in our agenda packet primarily. We'll adopt the minutes from our last meeting. If you don't have it in front of you, we will, in unfinished business items, discuss the 2021 National Night Out plans as they will be coming to fruition next week. And we will have a board meeting early that day. So if there's anything else that we need to address before then, we can do that as well. And then the main reason for this work session is discussion of 2022 Marvin Day event planning, just to check in on some of the items that we've been working on since our last meeting. There are no new business items. And Austin's not here, so I'm not sure if we'll actually review the action items, an ongoing list, and then board member comments. Do I hear a motion on the table to adopt the agenda as it is written?
Senator.
Oh, he's quick. I second.
Any further discussion?
Leave it open.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. The next item on the agenda is the adoption of the minutes from July 13th of '21. And I have a copy of that here if anybody needs to see it. It was sent out in our agenda packet. But any questions, concerns, changes, or edits that anyone feels need to be made? Do I hear a motion on the table to adopt the 7:13, 21 minutes as they are written?
So moved. Got to it faster than you.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
We may be nothing else, but we're going to be efficient.
And then the next item on the agenda is unfinished business items number one. And that is a discussion of 2021 National Night Out. Derek, would you take it from there?
I think we're good to go. Banners should be here today and put those up and publicize here at Town Hall and at the park. Austin's going to send out some more reminders. I'm asking the band for a flyer that promotes them so we can kind of...
Who's the band?
Southern Express. It's a little bluegrass.
Have they played there before?
I think they...
Yeah, they're the ones that I heard before. They were really good. They were fun. Yeah.
So we can promote, you know, from that angle of live music. Deputy Montgomery got a really nice donation from Publix, I believe, that said they would give 250 hamburgers and 250 hot dogs.
Wow.
So then he got a...
That solves my dinner.
I'm sorry. Monetary donation that we'll buy the buns, plates, other little stuff from.
Did we get a response from Firethorn whether they had that grill that we can borrow? Or were we...
Called him yesterday to follow up with that. So I hope and I'll hear back from him today.
And if not, we'll just...
Because it's like a really big grill.
That's a really big grill. And when you're cooking that...
No, that, yeah, it'd be a lot better.
It does get flowing. But if you need to bring yours and I need to bring mine or something like that, I'm sure we can...
Yeah, we can make it work.
But that one is a lot easier if it's just the one, but we'll see. I think they had issues locating the last one.
So I think we're good to go. Just...
And it starts at 5:30?
Promote, promote, promote. Yeah, more or less. I think I told the band to do two sets, like a 6 to 6:45, and then a 7 to 7:45.
Okay, okay.
Don't want to get ahead of the curve here, but Marsh, you know, we'd like to have a place to put a table. Do you have any idea where they might be?
In the barn. That's all I can say.
Well, that's fine. That's all I want. That's great.
And we're talking about a week from today.
Yeah.
Yep. If we're talking about promote, 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 I was hoping, I didn't realize Austin was going to be gone. I imagined notes that we need to have something sent out every day this week and over the weekends and Monday and Tuesday next week. So I don't know who, Christina, if you can do that or...
Do me email him right now and see what he's capable of.
Yeah, you can.
I know he's checking emails because he's already emailed me back about something this morning. But I would think that we would want, you know, Nextdoor, MailChimp, you know, Twitter, Facebook, whatever, whatever we have, yeah. Every single day, just, you know, "One week away." "Four days. Don't forget," you know, whatever.
You can have your countdown.
That's right. But just have it sent out every day so that, you know.
Is anyone else other than Marsh gonna be there, like Marsh is gonna be there? Don't what you call?
Well, a bunch of the law enforcement.
Well, yeah, yeah, yeah. I mean, they'll be there, yeah. But anybody, I'm trying to think, is there any other?
Did they discuss, did the deputy discuss having someone from, am I confusing this with Marvin Day? Or somebody from the Waterfowl Rescue?
That's Marvin Day.
Yeah.
Okay, that was good. I'm sorry. They were just kind of...
Coles will be there, I know.
Coles will be there to help, yeah. They send volunteers and he did tell us that they were going to do that.
They do.
Yeah.
I just wonder if there's any other organizations, I don't mean like Marsh, but similar, like would the Boy Scouts want to be there, something like that, that just, you know, fill up the space?
Yeah.
Things that people might be interested in.
I'm sure you have what staff we have available to be around at that time. But how are we going to handle parking? Who are we going to want to direct the parking part of it?
That'll be all us, the park staff.
Okay.
Flags. Do you guys have flags to direct like airplanes?
I just didn't know if you had enough and you think you...
Move it forward!
Anything like that. You feel you're pretty...
You should put on a safety vest. Safety first.
We have this.
Yeah.
I have a couple of those.
You have to come to the back of the park to see them.
I'm looking out for anybody in there.
One time, I'm in there.
Okay. Anything else then? Any questions, concerns? We will have the meeting the morning of. So next Tuesday morning, we have the meeting as well. So any last minute things, I think we could figure out by then. But Derek, if you could just let me know about the grill. And then if not, I'll plan to make sure that I have mine.
And I can bring one too. I mean, it's not huge, but it's, you know, regular. And I'll make sure it has gas.
I already have an extra gas, so I'll bring that along too.
Because that'd be real nice to bring that without that.
Because we almost had that issue one year.
We have some tanks too. Make sure they're full.
Even better. Be sure.
All right. Any further discussion on National Night Out? All right, the next item in unfinished business is discussion of Marvin Day celebration. So I know at our last meeting, there were a number of takeaways that each of us kind of had. And that was only about two or three weeks ago. So, you know, I guess I could start on a couple of the takeaways that I had. One of them was in regards to reaching out to the school. And it's probably the most critical one because...
Yeah, location.
Figuring out the date and location is going to have a big impact on what we can do. What I will say is it's a little difficult right now. For those of you that don't know, Donna Cook, who's been the principal there for many, many years and who I was directed that I need to speak to, resigned and has been replaced.
Really?
There's a, so there's a new principal who I have, they have left a message for him, but he was just approved at like their July 13th meeting. Matt Asher used to be an assistant principal at Marvin between 2012 and 2018. And has most recently been over at Monroe High School, I think, the last year. So he's going to be the new principal. They promised me they, you know, get my request in front of him because they said he would be the right person to start with. And then depending on what we're talking about, he would have to determine whether we'd have to go to the county yet or not. But because he's probably drinking from the fire hose right now, he hasn't gotten back to me yet. You know, I think the date that we had spoken about is that date in May. I think it's the 21st, which is a week before Memorial Day because you don't want to get into that or after that because then people start going away on vacations, graduations, all of those things. So I'm still trying to target that date. And I did mention that to them to try to get in front of them. Because all of us, as we start having conversations, the first thing anybody asks, what's the date going to be? You know? And, you know, for some of the larger things and the availability to have a larger parking lot for, you know, some events in the evening and music, food trucks, things, I think it's going to be highly dependent on seeing if we're going to have access to a site like that.
Yeah.
Agreed.
Do you want me to reach out and just tentatively ask Firethorn if we can't get the high school, if we can have it there?
If we, if we want to be wedded to that date rather than maybe even one earlier, I would say yes. But gosh, I think about even when they've done fireworks and stuff like that.
Oh, it's crazy.
And some of the parking issues and stuff that they've had, even that would be pretty tough to do, you know? I don't know that our parking lot is really...
That's the only other option I can think of. Unless maybe we did it like we, no, I was going to say we could set something up in the parking lot like Publix, but...
Yeah, even that, it'd just overwhelm them. They'd have no room for their shoppers, you know?
Yeah, I know. That's what I was thinking.
So...
I mean, I don't know. I just don't know where else we would have it. I mean, maybe if we can't have it on the main field, maybe we can have it on like the practice field.
Sure, yeah. And utilize the parking up at the top side.
And even the back side, and people can walk around. I mean, they can get the...
Because we may be running into, it is going to be the end of the school year too. There could be playoffs.
And sports. I know. That's what I was thinking.
You know, so there will likely still be some remnants of things going on, whether they're playoffs at that point.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking too.
This year and last year have kind of screwed me up to the schedule, but...
Okay, well, we'll just wait then.
Yeah, and if I don't hear from them by the end of this week, I'll reach out to them again because it could just get lost in the shuffle.
I definitely keep following up.
And I want to have something known by the time we meet next Tuesday.
Yeah.
You know, if we got to start scrambling.
And we could move, I mean, we've got, we've got it on the 21st right now. We could move it to the 14th or the 7th. I mean, still going to be pretty nice weather. I mean, May's a pretty consistent.
I would think later in May, we would be done with sports. But they're probably not going to know that until they get there. Like, that's the thing.
Well, and later, that next weekend is Memorial Weekend. So that one's kind of out. And now you're in June and now you're graduating, you know? At least in college.
I would just say, yeah, just keep following up, John.
And it's not like we need the stadium, like you said, you know?
If we can't, I mean, I think that would be the question.
It would be nice, yeah.
But if we can't, then, yeah, okay.
Okay. The other one that I was personally following up on was talking about the equine events, you know? And I reached out to a friend of mine, Jill Gressay, who's actually very involved and plugged in to a lot of those folks. She's worked with Marsh before and she's told me, you know, she's very professional and she has a lot of good contacts with them. She's hesitant to start contacting them in particular yet, again, until we have a gate date because they have shows and things that they do with the different disciplines during that time. But I'm really happy to have her involved. And in order to support her, I've got two or three other people that she knows also in that community. And I said to her, it's not mayor's event. It's going to be kind of some small offshoots because some of the people remember the mayor's events that we used to have. But just to help people, keep people aware of, you know, the types of things that they can offer in equestrian recreation in the area. We might have, you know, three or four sites broken up to morning and afternoon sessions where they show the different disciplines. She thought it was a great idea, really excited for it, as well as a couple of the other folks that I spoke to. I guess one question that I have is, does it make sense? You know, I guess we, in essence, as PRG, are going to be kind of the planning committee for Marvin Day, you know? I don't see us necessarily creating another committee because it's going to be kind of the same people. And we want to have that back and forth with council and things like that. But do we think about having any smaller subcommittee? Well, it wouldn't be a subcommittee because there's not a committee. But how would we coordinate somebody that might take lead of getting interested people in the car show? I forget, you know, who talked about that, right? The people that are doing the equine, does it need to be a formal committee? How, what's the best way to handle that?
And this is something I've been thinking about too. So, yeah, I'm interested to know the answer.
My gut reaction is no, I don't think it needs to be a formal committee. I think because we're going to be the ones that are running it. And again, council is full on board. So like obviously Jamie, he'll help with whatever he needs help with. Joe, I talked to him to talk to John about the cars. So like he's on board with the cars and Bob too. Bob was like, I can help with cars. Like, so council is fully on board with taking a chunk and kind of, you know, being in charge of it. So I feel like between us, staff, and you guys, we can get, I don't, I just don't think we're going to need like a subcommittee for each, like, offshoot.
Okay.
That's my gut.
And if that's the case, because I think once you create a formal subcommittee, then you start with meeting laws and all of those other things as well. So would it make sense then maybe that we designate some leads of these different activities? And then maybe invite them at least to one of our next meetings?
I think so, yes.
Because that's what I was thinking with the lack of a formal committee. Because I even, you know, like I told Jill, you know, I said, we, you know, I told her that we'll be available, but that we wouldn't expect her to show up to this meeting necessarily because we don't even have a date yet.
Yeah, I think so. And again, council talks about it. It's on our, it's on our work session and our regular meeting, every single meeting up until, like, it will be, that will just be a agenda item forever.
Okay.
Derek's on point, correct?
Derek's on point.
So all, so, right, in terms of reporting structure, if, just making these things up, Bob Nunnecamp, I'm in charge of ice cream and I'm in charge of...
We did put you in charge of garden tours.
In garden tours.
He is your guy.
We volunteered you for a lot when you were gone.
So I'm in charge of those. And I'm reporting into Derek. And my responsibility or accountability is to give him periodic updates. Because this is going to come sooner than later.
Oh, yes.
And you don't want everything piling up at the end. And it's got to be simple, formal checklist management. Bob Nunnecamp on this day is going to provide this information to you. And you can provide the council where everything is. Otherwise, it's going to be a train wreck, in my opinion. So...
Or just a bunch of emptiness. That's what I'm worried that that just won't happen.
So I will report into Derek. Derek will set up a frequency, I'm assuming, of when we're going to meet and how we're going to inform him about that one. Is that correct?
I mean, Christina?
So I'll prepare something that looks like this. That's basically the subcategory, this is equine, this is garden tour, 5K car show. Y'all will assign a point person, for example, garden, says Bob. And then I'll get all the details as to what's needed, what, when, where, how much, that sort of thing. And we'll have all these little templates put in place and he can manage these. And then y'all kind of fill in the blanks with, does that make sense?
Sure. Christina, okay.
So what I'm, I'm working on, so I had a similar thought, is a spreadsheet where I can, every meeting, give it out and then update it for the next one. So I've got point person, item you're working on, what location, if that applies, what's the latest, and what are the next steps? So we'll get together and kind of merge these two things. Because Christina, this Christina suggested a schedule layout so that we're not planning 18 events up here.
All at 1 o'clock.
No, she's exactly right.
So we'll, we'll kind of have a little bit of both.
Well, we sort of have to do this one first. Yeah, we got to have something to schedule.
So, yeah, I thought that, going back to the kind of subcommittee thing, I thought that we were the point people for every subcommittee. Like you were going to go run with garden tours. If you need to recruit outside help, then that's fine. But I didn't think we were going to...
And that's fine, yeah.
Bring in anybody else that they would kind of give you the information and you bring it back to these meetings. Is that...
That, that works for me as well, yeah.
Yeah, that's why I said I feel like council can help.
Yeah.
This board can help. I think, you know, again, I think we can reach out to planning boards, see if they want to get involved with like, you know, being a tour. I mean, you know, they don't...
We can, we can get a template together and then it'll make sense, make more sense.
And what I was talking about was having a schedule for the actual event. Because I have one of those for the Heritage Festival because, and it all happens on one campus. But we still have lots of different things going on simultaneously. And that way, we don't end up with all the really cool stuff happening all at the same time. And then, you know, then nobody knows where to go or whatever. And since we're going to be in a different area.
It also might help to have something like that as you're trying to get people's interest in it. Where they see kind of, this is kind of the rough thing. What we want this day to look like. And the sooner we kind of have that, the more real it looks to people and the more engaged they'll, they'll get.
Well, and, and see, I use that just so that I can keep up with things. And I get items that are scheduled, I just pop them in that spreadsheet. And so at the beginning of the year, whenever we start planning that thing, there's very little in it. Like I know I've got this band right here and I know I've got these people to do this over here. And it looks kind of like there's not much going on. And then you just keep filling it in, yeah. And you've got blocks for things. I color code it based on whether it's a done deal or not, right? It's, you know, so I might want people to do this right here, but, you know, I got to go find them to do it. Yeah. It just helps to think it through.
All right, so John, you're going to keep following up with the school.
I'll keep following up with the school. Hopefully between now and our next meeting Tuesday, they get back in touch with me and say, yeah, that date looks workable, or no, we just can't do it there, you know?
And you get this, this amenity for that date, right?
Correct.
Yeah, because that seems to be the lynchpin. Once we've got that, then we can...
Yeah, I mean, I think we try to stick with that date.
Yeah.
But, you know, if they can't, you know, if they can't make it work and they said the week before we could totally do, then we can, you know? But otherwise, I think we just stick with that date and we just look at alternatives.
Yeah, I agree. Because that, that's a big location.
That's the culmination of the end of the day, you know?
Well, that too.
They might have the car show there during the day, but I don't know what other events we could do in there that we couldn't get to Barn or these other places. So, yeah, it'd be more, you know, I'm guessing maybe from 6:00 p.m.
Till...
On that we would really need it. So that might even give them the day to do their sports stuff and things like that.
Well, yeah, there's that. That's a good point.
Yeah.
Well, if you're, well, it just depends on what you're doing there. If you're, if you want a band to start at 6:00, then they're going to be there way earlier than that, trust me. So, yeah.
We'll just wait and see what they come back with and then we'll make a decision. And what else is on, what else, what else do you have? Your following up, John?
That, that was just me. Those were the ones specific for what I think they're...
I have emailed the Raptor Center guys again because I hadn't heard back from them. So I emailed him again. So hopefully I'll get, you know, he'll get back to me. Firethorn, still on board. We're good there. Those are my two, those are my two big things. But we were supposed to try to come up with the name. Yeah. Did anybody come up with a name?
I still just like basic Marvin community day.
I do too.
I don't see a problem with that either.
I even just like Marvin Day.
Marvin Day. I don't...
I like Marvin Day, but...
I mean, I'm just like, I, I mean, I kept going over and over again and I was like, I really just like Marvin Day. Like, it's just, I mean...
And I do have some logos to look at if somebody wants to see those.
Yes, we do. But I just, I just like Marvin Day. It's, you know...
Well, why don't we keep it like that? And if something pops up between, in a couple, over the next couple of months, we, you know?
Okay. I just, I think Marvin Day is just, it's, yeah, okay. So that was one thing. Sponsorships. Who's working on sponsorship? Is that you, Christina? Were you bringing like a tier thing?
Oh, I was going to share with you guys what we do. I mean, we just have a, and Jamie is absolutely right. It needs to be much higher level. We have 1,500, 250, right? Which we even, we need to up. He was talking about 5,000 and probably 2,500 and 1,000. Because there's, you know, at some point, it's not worth having a conversation. I know. And Bob's already offered 10, so, you know? He wanted to feel like he was living big, you know? So it was living big. Isn't it nice?
Oh, yeah.
And those levels, you're just talking about a couple of key tier sponsors?
I don't know that you would turn down seven people who showed up with five grand, right?
I guess that's what I'm wondering though.
Well, because he mentioned, Jamie mentioned just having two at the top tier. And I'm like, you know, if the third one showed up, would you say no? I mean, you know, I, so I'm, you know?
But I think that that is going to be something that's imperative that we put together some sort of structure. And Derek, I even think we could probably pull from like the disc golf structure and just kind of rework it a little bit.
Well, you got to think about what you're going to do.
When you're asking for that 10 grand or that 7, they want to kind of know how many are there going to be.
Yeah.
And that, and that may be the reason to keep it. We've never had that problem at the Heritage Festival. But I also think you need to think of, what are you going to give them for that, right?
They're going to have a giant, like their name is going to be on banners. It's going to be on the T-shirt. It's going to be in all the promotional material that we have for that day, right?
So...
Recommend some?
Yes.
I was going to say, why don't you do whatever your top tier sponsors are and have that sponsor, like the stage sponsor or what, like if the car show sponsor. How do you break up what each event you're doing, your top tier? So if it's Publix, like Publix decides a sponsor, it's like the Publix Car Show or Presented by Publix.
That's a really good idea.
Then, yeah, you kind of just block, like, obviously people give more money.
The lower tiers.
Yeah, I mean, and kind of put those in.
So we, we offer different things. The Heritage Festival offers different things to different level tiers, obviously. But the one thing that the top three are on the T-shirt, because, you know, you got this stuff at the bottom, you know, it's just like a ton of names and stuff. But they, they get their logo on the T-shirt. And if you've got banners or something, that you could have banners at each location that's got all of the big sponsors. But Hunter's idea about sponsoring different areas.
And the 5K or the fun run.
Yeah.
You know, presented by or sponsored by.
By atrium or Novant. I'll just go with that.
So maybe as we kind of, maybe at our next meeting even, as we continue to figure out what events, the car show, an equestrian thing, then we start to set up that sponsorship structure of kind of the general event sponsors.
Yeah.
And then sponsors that are tied to the car show, the equestrian event.
But I would look at, Derek, what you did for the disc golf and just kind of, I mean, you can all, again, we don't have to reinvent the wheel. And Christina, if you have like a sponsor list?
Yeah, it's just not going to, it's not going to convey very well, but, yeah, I can certainly see.
But I mean, it's just look at it. Like, you know, again, we don't need to reinvent the wheel if other people have done it.
Because we give away, and it's something to think about for the 5K. If you are a certain level sponsor, you get in the run for free. Because the run costs you the 20, 25 bucks or whatever to get in. So you get a certain number of people that get to run for free. And they get a T-shirt and all that kind of stuff, so...
Let me, let me play devil's advocate here. Are we complicating it by putting sponsors on each event to where I'm in charge of the 5K, like I've got to go get my own sponsor? Or is it simpler to say it's a Marvin Day sponsor? We've got a gold level, a silver level, and a bronze level. And then like Christina said, you're not going to turn down, you're seeking one gold title sponsor, three silver levels, and then you can delegate, and then bronze...
And then they get to choose out of the events or something like that.
Well, I think we go ahead and say like, you know, we have a specific meeting that says sponsorship, this is exactly what it's going to be. Because then you start getting into, well, such and such gave $500 and their name was all over a beautiful 5K T-shirt and 150 people have, you know, have a T-shirt with my business name on it, but...
I gave 10,000.
Yeah, I gave 1,000 to this car show and all I got was, you know, a banner that 12 people showed up to the car show, so I don't know.
When you ask you a question. When we go to get a sponsorship, at least when people called on me and wanted me to donate money at Pepsi, They would give me a list of things I would get in return. If it was a gold sponsorship, they would have everything laid out in terms of expectation. So I could have my team run numbers in terms of cost per thousand deliveries to see if it's a good investment for us or not. And so.
That's what I'm saying.
That's what you need to do.
This is what.
Two thousand dollars. I wanna see what I wanna get for my two thousand dollars other than goodwill. And so I think we need to establish within whatever we call these stages.
That might be the reason Bob donates, but it's not the reason Pepsi donates.
So, so I, I just think that needs to be established and very, very clear as to what I'm gonna get for gold.
So maybe like a gold entitles you to sponsor one of these events or something like that.
But, but I would still, I would, to his point, I mean, you, I think you can do both things.
Be the individual people getting the sponsors. I think we still need to have one core person. But I think his concern was more, does the person running the.
Oh, I know.
Run have to go get a sponsor, does the equestrian? And I'm saying, no, I don't think we wanna do that, you know. I think we wanna have one group of sponsors, but within that sponsorship, as he's talking about laying out what you get for that. Maybe the gold tiers do get to, you know, the, the opportunity to sponsor one of the signature events.
If they want to, yeah.
Maybe let them pick, like if you're, you know, if you're.
You get in first, you get to pick what ones you want, you know. These are the ones we have available, you know.
Because you might get a gold sponsor two months before the event. And you might get your first one tomorrow and you might get the next one in February and then it's different.
I think we need like to say at this meeting, we are gonna hammer out sponsorship.
I say by the September work session, cause that'll be our next work session, right?
Y'alls are this.
P R and G's next work session, I believe it's, because we, it's every other month.
The Marvin Day.
We, we have a work session for Marvin Day at every regular meeting too.
Yeah, no, but I mean, like just, just the work session.
That would be September.
You won't?
Possibly. Tuesday, September seventh.
He's out for all of September.
No, no, our, our work, no, our work session first, our work session for September should be the twenty eighth. Like just.
Marvin Day work session.
Good, good. So then by the.
Sessions, the twenty eighth of September.
Should be the twenty eighth.
So we'll have two regular meetings by that time.
So it's, it's, we have every, every, every month.
For the sponsorship to.
And then on the twenty eighth of September, we need to plan to flesh out the sponsorship, but we need to have a good idea.
And, and we should have the date totally locked up by then.
Can we make sure Jamie's here for that one?
Can you make a note to invite Jamie to?
Cause he thinks a little bigger than I do and that's good.
So September twenty eighth.
Twenty eighth, yeah.
And that'll be.
I'm used to lowballing everything and it just doesn't get you much.
Need to go to council for like a final approval?
The sponsorship?
I'm right here.
I mean, they'll have to appropriate the money that y'all raise back into that budget, so, I mean, it'll, in effect, go to them at some point.
Well, and, and, and where does that money go to? It just goes to general fund first and then it has to be allocated, okay?
Um, but speaking of sponsorship, I have somebody that wants to sponsor, so. Something. If he doesn't, it was like, sure, I don't know what it is, but I'm in.
Well, interestingly, um, the, the Heritage Festival gets lots of like chiropractors and dentists and, or the, all kinds of things like that, um, so we.
I mean, I feel like we could drive by the high school and look at all the banners up and call all those people and be like, hey, you wanna be a sponsor for Marvin Day? I mean, seriously.
No, absolutely.
Yep, so, okay, so by the twenty eighth, let's have, let's come with, come with like any sponsor, like stuff that we've seen.
Could we send that into Austin and then he distributes it out to us, so we all have it beforehand and we can look at it? Cause that's what, and, cause I would love to see the one for the disc golf and any other ones that we can, I mean, there's other places we can post up from other big events.
And then did we talk about, when we initially started talking about sponsorships, that, did that also include, like them having a space in the barn or something like that, or? If they're sponsoring an event, would they be able to keep a table at the barn or something?
We do that, absolutely.
I think that, yeah, we should.
Depends on how much money.
Should that be kind of a baseline for bronze level sponsors enough, the opportunity to have a table?
I think so.
The September twenty eighth meeting?
Yeah, I guess so.
But you'll see, like with the, the Heritage Festival, we give them a free run, they have a certain number of runners they can enter for free. Uh, they have a booth if they want one, a lot of them don't do it, but they have, they have a presence, they can set up somewhere. And they get T-shirts and I can't remember. And, and we, and we, we promote them in our advertising, the, the bigger sponsors.
So bring the Heritage Festival thing, even though it may not, we may just change the numbers around and. But bring that and, or send that to Austin.
I will.
So if anybody has anything, send it to Austin and have him send that out in like the agenda packet so that we can prep for it.
That's what I'm saying.
And then, and then we'll iron it out at that meeting.
And I'm gonna look for some other ones too, some of other big events that, just to give us some idea of what people give to each other for, for cash.
That's good. Alright, so we've got the name, sponsorship, I updated you on my stuff, John updated you. Alright, Bob, what do you got?
I have nothing other than the fact that we will have garden tour and. And Bob and Judy will be in. So I know it will be successful.
Grow it from there.
Like take one, you can take one side.
I'll be getting up with everybody in terms of.
I messed them up pretty good.
Try to find out some other people that has gardens.
Pretty gardens?
And I think Derek says he may anticipate.
Yeah, Derek's gonna do his vegetable garden.
I can't, I can't be running it.
No, no, give me another page too.
Well, I would say, I would say obviously.
Give me that one that's sitting on your, right there. That one, give me that one.
Yes, ma'am.
Give me that one, thank you, sir.
I would also say that, um, the, the park, thank you very much to the high school volunteers that are kicking butt every day out there. The park, the cottage garden will look great in May. And the community garden, the vegetables, I gotta admit, this year it looks pretty good. Mine is the worst looking one out there. I'm really proud to say that. But, but in May, most people have planted things, it will look, it'll be new, but it'll look really nice. So those are two more places to go with.
Seriously, I'm gonna send out an email to everybody, um, so asking if you know someone with a beaut, you know, a beautiful yard.
How beautiful does it have to be?
It's gonna be beautiful.
Well, it's gotta be nice, you know.
You're not coming to my house.
So, so I'd like to have at least two or three locations. That's what we had last time, had a great turnout. Forty-some people come to our garden.
Oh, great.
I just passed out some stuff. I was talking to Kat Summer Rendenberg about, um, home and garden tours that I've seen done in other municipalities. This is just an idea, if you guys wanna pitch the idea in your head at the September meeting. But basically, a lot of these municipalities will have like a, a cause. Uh, we're gonna sell tickets for garden tours to, I don't know, construct a, something that Derek wants, the stage.
Those that Derek wants. It's all about there.
And what they'll do is they, I mean, people wanna show off their stuff. They spend a lot of time in their gardens or their house, however you wanna, however you wanna approach it, but, have like, you know, give them a little welcoming package with a bottle of wine, some tea or something that they can have laid out for the people that come through.
Garden gloves, seeds.
Oh, I can get some really nice gloves and I can give you a beauty berry from the, the park.
So, um.
Three hundred of them.
Inside of this information that I just passed out, there's some information about what other places are doing. Hillsboro, for instance, has artists that are out and they display their artwork at the gardens. Some of them even have actual artists doing like landscape pictures.
Oh, plein air, that's awesome. They're actually painting in the garden.
So just some ideas, if y'all wanna think about.
Get on it.
Selling tickets for that. Um, it obviously beef up this section of the event a little substantially, but you could put that money into something. And people more than likely pay for those tickets.
What was that plein air thing? We have a lady who does that at the park.
Paintings.
Painting, yeah.
Just having like, for instance, they could have, she could come to Bob's house and actually paint while the garden tour is going on.
And people could buy stuff for her.
Somebody ought to be doing that in Marvin Park's cottage garden every day. I mean, it is, it, it, it's ready to be painted pretty much all the time.
Where's the cottage garden?
The very front.
Isn't it the?
Don't even, don't even.
So, but, hey, did anybody notice there's a sponsorship section here that you can click on it, just level the sponsorship? That might be a great spot to do. On the back of the front page.
Oh, back, I didn't even know there's, yes, perfect.
Click, we should pull this up and click on that and see what the levels of their sponsorship stuff looks like. See, don't reinvent the wheel. I like the holiday tour too.
Yeah, that's.
We got some good houses in Marvin.
That's actually a big fundraiser in Albemarle, like they, they raise a lot of money.
Albemarle, North Carolina? My family's in there. They have some really pretty houses, cause they didn't tear them down, cause they didn't have enough money to do that.
I know, that's fine, that's fine, but I like that idea. But I love this idea and I love the painting idea.
I, I really like adding that to it.
Do we have painters?
Well, I, I know they used to do, it wasn't just painters, but, the lady that owns Shea Rose also does pottery. I know that they've had their own kind of pottery tours before. They put out the signs and there's four or five places in Marvin.
Yeah, there's two down here, two those, cause I've been. Well, you could even, that's on my list.
You could have a painter at Bob's house and then a potter at somebody else's house and they could display.
What about people who build garden things, like, um, like out of metal sculptures?
Tom Rizer, my neighbor, yeah. He's the one that does them all for everywhere. He, 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 all the Waxall things, like that railroad sculpture, he did that. If you go by his house at the front of my neighborhood, you go down the dirt road, you can see all sort, I mean, he does it for Matthews. Um, he did in Matthews Center, there's a bunch of art that he's done.
What's his last?
All those bench, Tom Rizer. Yeah, he, for, with his own money, he's the one that built the skateboard park in Waxall.
Wow.
Yeah, let's get him involved somehow.
He, he's involved in another project, but I, I think he loaned us, um, sculptures for one of our, he brought a sculpture out to, uh, Marvin, Eford Park Grand Opening or something. He, he brought a big sculpture out and put it out.
Stuff like that, I mean, that would be, that would be really, yeah. If he's willing to do things, that's a lot of work, but that sounds great.
But it, it, his would be more like, you, we normally have our neighborhood picnic at his house every year. And it's much less of a garden and it's more of a sculpture garden. He would probably be a part of the garden tour, but it's a very unique thing, yeah.
No, that would be.
It's not like something you've ever seen before.
That would be very cool.
I love that idea.
You've also probably seen them around the tractor seat men. Like if you've seen, like, there's, there's like men, um, Shea Rose has a couple of them. It's made out of tractor seat, because what he does is he builds everything from scrap metal and stuff like that. And he has all of these tractor seat men and their bodies are made of like a tractor seat and, uh.
That's very cool. I gotta, I gotta look at that.
Okay, is some, are some of these, like what is across the street from, is it the chimneys that's over there? And across the street, there's a garden and, okay.
That's Shea Rose, who does the equestrian vaulting, but he also does the pottery. And, yeah, those are the tractor seat metal.
Why couldn't we redefine this and just call it a garden art tour? And then just have several more locations where somebody goes to the pottery, they don't have to come out to a garden.
Correct.
Oh, I love it. Okay, Bob, you're so good.
And then you go to, and I'll get up with you on the metal guy. And if he'll open his hand, we can just do, you know, maybe only be two flower gardens, but it'll be an art tour as well. People can see sculptures, art.
But, and if we have a person, if we have a person who wants to paint in the garden or at your house or whatever, then they can do that.
They all know each other.
Pottery, I don't know if it's on the list, but I know we have pottery somewhere, but, so we could include the pottery. Okay, that's cool. That's a great idea. There's apparently a guy.
I'm sorry, who's in charge of this?
Bob. Bob's in charge of that.
Is that under garden tours?
We're gonna do garden slash art tour. But apparently there's a guy like on the curve, there's that gravel road.
That's Tom.
No, no, down here.
Keep going.
Oh, okay.
Keep going.
This way.
And he does furniture. He does, apparently when Publix, they cleared Publix, he got a bunch of the wood and he makes furniture.
Like distressed wood?
Like distressed wood, you know, those really cool like tables, it's like, you know, like the trunk, like all that stuff. Apparently he makes those. Joe's been down there, Eric, Joe's been trying to get me to go down there. He might, that might be a really cool thing for like people to go down and see, cause it's got like, we're gonna ask him to do some art, like to make some like picture frames.
Like, do you mean, I would love.
Kind of stuff like that. Me too. Okay, so I'll talk to Joe about that.
If you could give him his name. And I'll get up with you and if we can lock in these people and then we can, you know, just get commitments from them, then we can give them details down the road. That would be a lot better than just the garden tour.
His isn't just garden sport, he built an indoor skateboarding bowl arena. That was done by Ronnie Holiday and ESPN taped Tony Bach there.
No way.
Oh, real, that is cool.
Yeah, I'll, I'll get, I'll get that, I'll get his. All the time and he's always like, let's run over there real quick and I never have time whenever we're doing it. I'll get with Joe on that.
That'd be great.
Yep, okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, when he started talking that, I was like, ooh, there's a guy, yeah, and he's in Marvin. Okay, cool, sorry. What else, what else is on our list? Christina's got logos and T-shirts?
Well, T-shirts when we need them, yeah, yeah.
Food trucks, we're gonna need the date, but that's probably something we're gonna wanna get early. Because those guys get locked up in testicles and all types of things.
Oh, I'm sorry, what are you doing with the T-shirts? You're designing them or you're?
I didn't know about T-shirts until right now.
Oh, I thought you were gonna bring the T-shirts.
I forgot to bring the one from the other one, sorry about that, yeah.
Have a vendor right here that can do the T-shirts.
Awesome, okay, that's great.
Already has our logo on file, but.
Well, I mean, they're, no, there are tons of people that will do a T-shirt for you. That's, that's the easy part. Put what, designing what to put on it. So what we had on the front of it was the logo, the date and everything, and then the back was all of the sponsors. And the bigger your logo, the more money you gain. I mean, it's pretty straightforward. And it had a bunch of turkeys on it, so I'm sure.
Did you come up with Marv?
So.
Yeah, what do we got?
You ready for this?
Ready.
Okay.
Can't wait. I want the shoe, I want the shoe heel muscles. What's it called?
The heel splitter. There's one on here. There's one on here. And, and all I'm saying is this is the first pass.
That is a very contentious.
No kidding.
Why is it contentious?
Things they don't wanna do.
Cause there was a board of adjustment meeting I ran until like three in the morning.
So this doesn't really look like a heel splitter.
Where's Marv?
Marv is down here, there he is.
No, Marv is too formal.
Okay.
Oh my god, I love the heel, he's so cute.
So these are just ideas.
People are gonna take that to the beach though.
I'm just, well, I know, and anyway, he's willing to do more work, but this took a lot of time, so you need to kinda pick an idea and we'll go with that.
I want cartoony.
I like the owl.
That's my dad's idea, actually.
I like the cartoony guys. These are too, these are too stuffy. These, yeah, these are too formal, but I do like the trees. But I like, I like the animated cartoony.
The thing about the trees, I, I, cause that was sort of my idea, because that's the thing we keep talking about, is trees around here. So I kinda like the trees because an owl could be in a tree, so you could have a mascot as an owl, but the tree be your logo. I mean, again.
I want, I want a fun horse.
Is that a rendition of the new town hall?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It's pretty.
I, I, we can, we can make a fun horse if you want to do that. I tried to make that one, tell him, I told him to make that as formal as possible, because to me, horses are, that's all about money and formality, the, but.
Actually, that looks like the horse in.
It is exactly the horse in the.
Oh, okay.
That's why he pulled it from there.
I really like, I really like the heel splitter.
I envisioned it to be this way more, but I guess that's what we got. So he's like, oh, what? And I sent him all these pictures of heel splitters, he's like, I'm not making a logo out of that.
Way too beachy.
I know, it is beachy though.
Well, it.
But it's so cute.
Well, and actually, that's what Neil said, he goes, this isn't the beach, and I'm like, these things live right here, right here.
I do like the owl, he's cute.
And Marv, his name could be Marv.
It could be if you really.
Could be Marv.
That would fit with a kid a lot better than a big old horse. That would fit with the kids a lot better than a big old horse.
I agree.
Well, he's a native, right? And and most everybody who lives here has heard an owl in their backyard. That's why.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, that's why that owl happened.
Can they, can he give us some owl options? Is it like the owl? Can we do some owl and tree combined option?
Yeah, I like the trees one too.
Me too.
Yeah, it is a little.
Kind of like the ribbon, the way the ribbon is there.
Oh, and you noticed the date he picked. I'm like, I don't know how many times I've told you it's in May, but.
It's May and so on. That's that's an easy thing.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah, but this, these are good for Santa. Can you like have them play with the owl some, maybe not so brown, like?
I mean, it doesn't have to be brown at all, right? It can be.
Well, here's the thing, are, when you get to shirts, like a lot of these are more black and white, are they gonna be color? Because that's a huge difference.
So here's what he will do, I promise, because he he's built, I mean, blasted this into my head over the years. He will, whatever we pick, he'll make sure that it works in a a black and white version or a red and white or whatever, a two color version. Because inevitably, yeah, inevitably, it will not work. Um, it won't be a good logo here, don't do that.
Um, just type in, um, come see me Rock Hill.
See me Rock Hill. Oh, I do, I do, I do like the heel splitter.
And then just, I can click on images. So this is, this is Glenn the Frog.
Glenn, like G L E N, Glenn, wow.
Well, there's uh Fancy Gardens downtown.
Oh, that's right, that's right. It is very, very nice. Okay, that makes sense.
Glen Care Garden.
Glen Care.
So you have.
It's beautiful.
The same mascot, right? The actual in-person mascot, um, but every year, the poster looks different.
Yeah.
Um, it's it's an actual competition uh with the local businesses, I think, who uh who design the, um.
The poster.
The poster. But Glenn has to be on the poster.
Yeah.
I I like that.
I like the colors.
Yeah, so you get the cartoon character and you have your, you know, your actual mascot that can be at the festivals.
So we could dress up old Marv the owl making a character.
Oh, that's, yeah, that's why I thought the owl worked pretty good.
We no longer have Rogie to be the elf, so.
And he, he's like, that was not on my job description. Wait a minute. Other did he decide, right? And you thought it was just picking up heavy bags of something. Oh, no.
You don't have to wear the elf outfit.
Oh, god, and there are pictures.
Right direction.
It's a real thing, isn't it? Oh, I'm sorry, Hunter.
Tell him thank you for doing.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
He's good at this sort of thing, but he's like, okay, that's enough. I've done enough. Well, he did the church one. I'm like, this isn't a church.
Cute. What? Oh, yeah, he's cute. I like him.
Well, so their idea is.
Do that with the owl.
Every year, the, they have a competition on building the new poster for that year. This is what Derek was just telling us, but they have to have the frog in it. Which is cool. So if you pick something like that, like the owl or tree or whatever, it has to have that in it, but.
Oh, that's cute.
You can get a cute, um, I really like that idea. Instead of changing the logo every year, you kind of change the.
Where the frog is, or the owl, what he's doing. Yeah, I love that.
Derek also said that the local businesses designed the thing as a competition.
Yeah, I like that.
You mean all of our local businesses that we have in?
Yeah.
Yeah.
But you could.
So it's gonna be Publix, Marcos, the nail place and.
But you could also open it up to school, art, art students.
I know, we're we're still working on the the kids, the letter, the letter, John.
Yeah.
I I didn't send, I didn't send you one, did I?
I know, you were supposed to.
I keep saying I'm gonna do it, and art, we're, I can tell you this, that I don't mean to depress you, but boy, we get nothing when we send nothing out. So I don't know that, um, it's.
To the school?
Yeah, they just, I don't know if they're overwhelmed.
I know the art teacher, so I'll, once we get the order, I'll send it to her. And I'm hopefully gonna be back in the school this year at the elementary school, at least at Marvin.
Yeah.
And I can be like, listen, this is a great project for you.
All right, so logos, I thi- I think uh we've got some good things to work from. Point person?
Christina.
Christina.
I love how I just, Christina's on it. She's right on top of that rose. What baby is that from? Anybody?
Rose.
Anybody? Right on top of that rose.
Don't know that one.
Thelma Louise.
Thelma Louise, he just hoping somebody will jump off a cliff.
Who's Rose?
Ooh, don't tell mom the babysitter's dead.
All right.
All right, my turn again?
Yep. Oh, and I've also got uh nature walks in the park, so.
Do you have people to guide those nature walks?
I will.
Okay.
Are you doing the park or you doing around town? Or both?
You know, if I get enough people interested, I would plop them wherever there's a decent trail.
Where else have they got it?
On trails.
Do you have any latest updates?
No, just that we're gonna do it.
Okay.
And and it's gonna be awesome. I'm kind of like, Bob, it's gonna happen and it's gonna be awesome.
It'd be great.
No, I've got a few people, uh master naturalist types, that they could do a guided tour and say, that's the, this kind of plant and that's that kind of burn and there's, you know, whatever, whatever. And they'll be perfect.
So we're talking like if, not just at the park, but like if somebody wanted to go from here to here, you could walk that trail and say, this is what, and then the toller trail, okay.
And so if I've, if I've got um a a few people that can do that, you know, throughout the course of the day, then you gotta spread them out. If it's just me, then it's gonna be one place.
Okay, cool. It's gonna be great though.
Yeah, and and it'll be a really good time of year to see some interesting things.
Oh, okay, good.
Yeah.
Perfect.
Oh, there's always something out there.
As long as there's no snakes.
Well, I can't promise that.
Don't like the snakes.
Oh, so I gotta tell this story on the the kids, no, not kid, the the guys that have been helping at the park. Um, one of them, I mean, he's gotta be sixteen years old or so, right? He's a high school kid. Frogs, little tiny frogs make him jump and scream like a little girl. And and so the rest of the guys are just laughing at, I mean, and he's, he's seen a frog, there's a frog again. They're like, oh, my god. I said, what are you gonna do when the snakes show up? And I'm over there getting the little frog and moving the little frog and, oh my.
That's funny.
He is hilarious.
I'm okay with frogs, it's the snakes.
Yeah, well, so I do have something to add to, cuz I asked some of those guys that are, there are a couple of girls, that are helping uh out there, and they thought that a cornhole tournament would be cool. They wanted, they wanted, they wanted to compete about things and like this, you know, and they would, they would have like a, what do you call it, um?
Uh, like a bracket system.
Yes, bracket system, yeah. That was an idea.
I hate that.
Yeah, that was an idea and I thought, you know, and this is.
No, we get that.
Now, we've got one.
Exactly.
We've got one cornhole official court, but you're talking about brackets, you're talking about a bunch going on at the same time, you're gonna need ten cornhole sets.
That's okay.
And that's why you need ten, but.
Couldn't we stick them to the right when you drive in?
Mm-hmm.
Take one of those fields, yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm not really sure what's in the park, so.
No, it's a, there's an empty spot.
Field on the park.
Empty spot over there. That would be plenty big enough. Um, you could also have the cornhole things sponsored, right? I mean, they could have logos and stuff on them. So we can make it all NASCAR-y if you want it.
Oh, you could also have a disc golf.
Yep.
Tournament.
Yep, and see, these guys didn't know about that, so I was telling them that that was coming and they were all over that. They thought that was a cool idea too.
Talking about the um artist people earlier, does anybody know anybody that makes cornhole boards in there? They're really not that far, but I was wondering because they they could donate a.
Of course.
Maybe.
Oh, Marvin's logo.
Logo, the festival logo.
The festival, yeah.
Do a tournament, whoever wins can win those.
I mean, I had my, my, yeah, we had ours done. Oh, that's a good idea.
Yeah, it's a very.
We had ours done in front of Guy in Charlotte, but I bet there's somebody.
You can also, which this would be.
Manage it.
Do you make them?
They're not, I mean, I don't make like, I don't do all the fancy decals, you know, I mean, just the wood.
It's not that hard.
Earth construction's pretty simple. It'd be a good eagle scalp project to have done by Nick.
It's amazing how popular, you know, Brewster Tavern that you were just at, they have a cornhole tournament over there and they got guys thirty-five and forty years old and they come as teams.
Oh, yeah.
This is not just a fifteen-year-old thing.
Stuff serious.
I know, I get.
And that, and they'll probably, you know, for beer and all this other stuff.
I know, but we could have an entry fee and then there could be a nominal prize at the end and then you get some more money from the park.
Speaking of prizes.
Event.
Yeah, yeah. Speaking of, god, that's sad.
I don't hate that idea.
Speaking of prizes, just keep in your mind, that was another thing, I forgot about this, that we ask for like, sort of like sponsorships. You need a prize for the the five K for things like that. And so people give certificates for, uh, like in Monroe, Southern Range Brewery gave us a hundred dollars last year. So one of the guys who won that five K got a hundred dollar gift certificate to a brewery. I mean.
So let's, let's, well, that into our sponsorship, participation.
Yeah.
And call it, and gifts, whatever you call it.
Add that to our.
Prizes.
Prizes, uh, prize donation or.
The, the other thing that one of the other kids said was, and he's in band, that the the band could come, there are, and there are different levels of band. They have a jazz band, they have, crap, I can't remember what the other one is, and then they have the marching band and they have versions of that. And, you know, we're at the park at the time, and so we're like, so what, you're gonna just march up and down the the road here? And he's like, sure, and. Now, he's not in charge, but he, he said it would be cool.
I mean, it could be fun like during the day, like people are just, you know.
Just making a big racket.
Derek's like, oh, we're getting out of hand now.
I mean, we kind of are. I mean, no, all the ideas are great, we just have to kind of think like, what can we just completely manage?
What can we execute well and then, and then put these on maybe the back burner for next year.
Yeah, I think Bob said last time, he's like, let's, let's focus on doing a few things really well.
Yeah.
And then we can expand. The thing I see with like, I mean, we're even gonna get into it with five K, um, when you start talking about cornhole tournaments or, um, you're just gonna, you're gonna bring in a lot of outsiders.
Yeah, family versus the competitive.
Yeah, that are only there for for the money and the competition. And is that your target audience?
No.
Right?
I'm not sure the money's gonna be that good. We can, we can make sure that it's not.
I'm gonna stop talking if I keep getting interrupted.
Excuse me.
And I'm gonna end the the meeting. All right, there's no formality here and it's getting kind of annoying. I understand that it's a work session and we can just talk, but just.
Yes, I don't think it's our, I don't think it's our target audience.
Yeah, and if the, if that's not who it is, or or if it is, that's fine, but let's just, I wanna iron that out so that.
It, it's not.
On the events and.
It's not. It's a community, it's a community event, like we're not, we want to include, you know, surrounding neighborhoods, but not bringing in people that are like competitive people like Bob's talking about, that he saw at the the brewery.
Yeah.
Go for it.
Go ahead.
No, my, my only question is, are we gonna do a five K? Or is that on the table?
Fun run.
Yeah, well, whatever. It's gonna be a family. I mean, the way I am, maybe I'm crazy, I just thought the five K was a family event.
Yeah.
It's not competitors coming in to run a five K, it's more of a walkathon and and.
Well, I think, so I think at the last meeting, there was discussion of both.
Okay.
And I believe there was support for it either way.
I I, I love the idea personally.
I I feel like if we're, I feel the conversation, I think, went, if we're calling it a five K, then you're gonna get people that want to run a five K. But if we're calling it like a fun run Marvin Trail Run, then you're gonna get more like Marvin people, people with strollers and walkers and not just like runners. Right? Is that not how that went? You weren't here.
Yeah, that's, that, that's how we discussed it and I don't think we settled on it one way or the other.
We didn't.
You know, but that's something that we will have to to kind of figure out what's.
Initially, it was put out there as a, like a trail run. We were gonna start at the school, take people down the loop, take them over to Tolemore. And then it shifted to a five K, um, and I'm, I did some research on the five K, I have that to present. But I need to know, you know, which way we wanna go. If we do a five K, do we wanna limit it to Marvin residents as the registrants? We've got seven thousand people in Marvin, you know.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm not, I'm not gonna run. The Vandenberg House will not be running. So there's, there's three. See, we got six thousand, no, um. I mean, maybe, I mean, like, like you said, we started it kind of as a trail run and then it was, maybe we can make it into a five K, cuz that's what, like three miles?
Three point one.
Yeah, um. And then I think you, you and Dan were gonna do some five K research and figure out if it's doable and if it's really not doable, then I think we just do a fun, you know, fun run trail, a trail fun run, I don't know.
Well, let me continue with the research and and bring back two more, some more formal options. I've got, here's what I've got. So I I reached out to an online company that's called Race Entry. They provide all the online platform for everything you need to set up your race.
Registration and everything.
They do, they do the registrations, um, they map out the course, you can use them for promotion. Uh, they don't charge anything, they just, they make their money on the registration fees. So they say the average is twenty-five dollars, um, and then they ma- they actually make their money on the the little, the processing fee. Um, so we, they said we could do it with as little as fifty people, hundred, hundred and fifty, um, probably need to count the spots at the elementary school and see what, you know, parking would be, but they can, we can promote t-shirts through that or you can click on t-shirt sizes. There's a big admin uh platform on that website for us to help, to help us management. They're there for support and then they're, they're just making their money on the um, on the registration fee. So I was gonna go over this with Dan, um, talk to Waxall and Indian Trail and see who they use for their five Ks.
Didn't we talk about capping it?
Well, we'd have to, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Instead of a run, why can't we do a walk?
We can do both.
To reposition it to where it's not a competition, it's a walk and we walk for a cause. Now, I'm gonna go ahead and tell you guys that, but you know, walk, walk for your life would be the thing and then a carrot wildlife. So people register, it ties into the owl, ties into the positioning of wildlife, it ties into marsh, it ties into what we're all about. We make it a family event, you register fi- for five or ten dollars and you walk this event, the money goes to whatever we choose to donate it to. And make it more of a walk than a run.
Then you don't have to worry about timing it, cuz the, at at least for the Heritage Festival five K, the timing uh cost is the most expensive cost of anything we do. It's close to five hundred dollars. So that you can make sure that everybody that started the run, ends the run and you've got their time.
Yeah, I mean, I like, I like it, I don't, I don't necessarily want like a competition. I thought we kind of started the the conversation about it so that people could see some of the loop, they could see some of the trails, they could see some of the connectivity.
That's right.
So I like the walk idea better than like, and if somebody, shoot, if someone wasn't going to run it, knock yourself out.
Knock yourself out.
Really fast walking.
Sure.
It would be a lot easier logistically planning it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I, I. I see a lot of people participating in a walk, but if it's a run, Derek, I think people are gonna, some people feel intimidated.
Yeah.
Like, okay, I'm seventy-three, I'm not gonna run five, but I can easily walk it and I'll participate and so, so will Judy.
That's a really good idea.
Yeah, I think if you just make it a family fun run, you know, family fun run slash walk.
Yeah.
You know, five dollars to entry, which goes to.
Pay for a t-shirt.
Blah blah blah, yeah.
And everybody who registers gets a t-shirt and there's no medals at the end and there's, and you can, even if you do wanna give something away, you can do a random drawing of everybody that that participated and give some stuff away if you do.
We need to get stuff away.
I don't either.
I think people are gonna be happy to donate money to a cause and we pick a cause and.
Minimum donation of ten dollars gets you a free t-shirt.
Yeah, and a t-shirt promotes Marvin Day, so it becomes a.
And um.
Circular.
Your.
Can you still use that online registration? Cuz we're still gonna need to register people, don't you think?
You can, there's all kinds of formats to do that.
But that one, it doesn't necessarily have to be like a competitive.
And the walk calls could tie in with the the health fair experience?
Yes.[1768.43]
Does that work?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I like, I like that better than trying to do something competitive, 'cause this is supposed to be a fun day that's, and I, I understand people like competition, I do too, but um, I, I think Bob's right, I think it's gonna get more people to come out and walk.
You could target the exposure of the trails more.
Me too.
If people are walking, you know, 'cause then, you know, you're not focused on, I gotta make this time and win this race.
Yeah, so that would be easier than for you, Derek, to.
Oh, yeah, I mean, ball this up and throw it away.
Well, no, just keep it, put it in a file.
And it may be something that it changes over, you know, we're talking about baseline year one.
Correct, 'cause, 'cause again, hopefully we're gonna have some more trails, and we're gonna, you know, so we'll be able to.
'Cause the idea of a five K trail run is a little unusual in a good way. There's a lot of people that are interested in running a five K on a trail, and that's why we get any attention we do in Monroe.
Yeah.
Um, 'cause there are not very many of those.
No.
But, but I think this is much better, and I, you know, I like your idea about run, walk for wildlife.
Yeah, I think it's good.
And I don't understand if we're, are we gonna raise money with this? If we, if we make a profit on it after we pay for t-shirts, are we gonna?
Yeah.
Give that to somebody, and you said to the health fair, I don't understand what that means.
No, just like leak it into the health fair, like this is something healthy, you're gonna get out, and you're gonna walk, you know?
Yeah.
You can go to the blood drive when you're finished, you can, you know, talk to whoever, whatever. I mean, it's a walk now, it's a walk now.
Yeah, walk for your life and put the carrot in their wallet.
No, no, yeah, and, but I thought I heard somebody say if we, we were gonna raise money for a cause.
That was me.
Yeah, right.
Right, and we just need to determine, Christina, that call.
Yeah.
It can be me.
And I think Derek raised.
And that's what I don't understand.
Didn't you say something about health fair or?
Yeah, the health fair.
Well, I was gonna have the health fair going on for like when you finish the run or race, you know?
Oh, okay.
Health Fair Expo at the school.
Okay.
Um, I've got a number of vendors already ready to go with that, but so, um, what was your cause you were thinking to?
Well, I was just, I just thought, walk for your life, that's a health positioning, right?
Okay.
Walk for your life, and then have a carrot and put wildlife. So you'd be running for the wildlife, your life, wildlife in Marvin, and it'd be a cute t-shirt, you can have the owl. And, and you raise money for whatever we determine to be the cause.
That, that's what I was getting at, I didn't understand that.
We don't know what causes.
Right, right, right.
If somebody said, hey, Bob and Judy, it's gonna cost you ten bucks a head to do this walk, but I get a t-shirt, Judy gets a t-shirt, I'm all in. And, and I'm donating money to a cause that we feel pretty darn good about, so, and whatever the cause is, Derek, I, I don't know yet.
Yeah.
It's just an idea, so.
The Heritage Festival five K raises money for Carolina waterfowl, and we actually end up having people donate extra money over and above their entry fee because it's for Carolina waterfowl, which they would never do if there wasn't a donation.
What do y'all think about this crazy?
Here we go.
Marsh.
No, no, I know it's hard to believe here, no, I know it's, I know I sound like a broken record, no. We're talking about getting the Raptor Center.
Yep.
What if we told the Raptor Center?
Oh, we're gonna raise money for?
We're gonna raise money for them, they'll come out and put on a big show.
'Cause they normally charge us.
Right, and they charge a lot.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, you're all the money.
Why, why wouldn't we? Why wouldn't we do that?
How do we tie the Raptor Center into?
It's wildlife.
Marvin is wildlife.
It's wildlife.
They're, they're rescue as well, right?
Yeah, it would be run for your life, wildlife, and the money goes to, and everybody loves the Raptor Center.
The money above whatever the T-shirt.
They definitely have owls.
They have, they have owls.
Yeah.
And see if they would come out, because normally they charge three hundred and fifty or four hundred bucks to show up.
All right, I'm gonna throw out an al- not an alternative, but some way to couple it.
Yeah.
We had a baby fawn that was born on our property, and the dogs got a hold of it, and so my father-in-law had to rescue the fawn, and they found a farm in Waxall to take it to.
It's okay.
And it, it's fine, but we were like number seventeen of the number, you know, the fawns that had been brought in.
Mm.
Lose any deer.
So, and I know that, you know, the deer are always like a popular.
Right.
Topic around here.
Right.
Um.
Yeah, I mean, and.
So there's, so this is a farm that does rescue down in Waxall?
Well, and Carolina waterfowl is in Union County, so, for what that's worth.
I like it.
Yeah.
You do in addition to.
And.
Or, yeah.
Carolina waterfowl ends up with snakes and ducks and birds and all kinds of things.
That's, we could do that.
I like the idea of the Raptor Center to try to get them to come in and.
Bring an owl.
Bring owl, and get a hawk and a falcon and a.
Yeah, 'cause it.
I just wanna stand there with the gloves on.
They'll probably let you do that.
Don't do it.
Yes.
Pictures for the website.
For a small fee.
For a small fee.
For an auto fee.
All right, so who's gonna, you were gonna talk to?
I'm still working. I, I, I just emailed the guy again this morning, 'cause he hasn't gotten back yet.
Okay.
Jamie did a soft, uh, our old finance director did a soft intro to the guy, and he never emailed me back, so I just emailed him again. So I'll keep following up with him at the Raptor Center.
So that's your, that's gonna be your item?
So if we're good with doing the donation thing, when I talk to him, I can say, hey.
For the fun run.
Yeah. We'd like to, you know, raise money for, you know, you guys, if you guys can come out and, you know.
I think that's a great way. For, for the first time, we should at least.
Yeah.
I think that's a great way to start. 'Cause I'm sure that there are plenty of birds that are damaged here that, in this county, that end up at the Raptor Center.
Maybe they're not Union County, but we're trying to get them to come out here, so, and if they have owls.
What do they normally charge for?
Three fifty, four hundred dollars.
Uh, I bet it's.
That easily, yeah, and then some.
Yeah.
That's what, now, that was a quote they gave me about a year or so ago.
To come out for March?
Yeah, when we first started, Mar- we couldn't afford three hundred and fifty bucks. We couldn't, we couldn't afford three dollars and fifty cents actually at the time.
So they might still charge you, but that could be the incentive, is that, one, whatever you raise, that's what's paying for it.
That's what that pays for.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, it's like, I would.
Perfect.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, they get a minimum, basically.
All right, well, I'll ta- I'll talk to them, but I'll use that as kind of a, some leverage to.
Yeah.
See if they'll donate instead of, 'cause we're gonna be able to raise more money. I'll let them tell me how much it's gonna cost, and I'll say, well.
Yeah.
I got a deal for you.
I got a, do I have a deal for you? Okay, what else, Derek?
Um, all right, so my table with five K, look at the walkathon.
Pivot.
Continue with the health fair.
Yes, we're still in a meeting.
Blood drive. Um, I did have, somebody told me to look into the alpacas, so.
Alpaca, alpaca, alpaca.
That, um.
That, that could, that might fit in with the equine.
Yeah.
I, I can, because the.
Oh, Derek, he's gonna take that off your plate.
There are a lot of the same people, I think, unless you know some.
The people across the street from you.
Oh, yeah, he's my neighbor.
Oh.
So we, we started the discussion.
Do we have more alpacas in Marvin than just across the street from Derek?
Yeah.
Oh.
Oh, yeah, there's some.
Some free roaming ones?
Hello, they're so cute.
Wow.
Okay.
Um, you want that.
Wait, did you talk to him, Derek?
As part of your.
Uh, since he's a neighbor of yours, why don't you just, but, but you and I'll connect about the equine thing.
Did you talk to him already?
He said he's not opposed to the idea, he just wants to discuss logistics. Um, and then I will, I'll look into setting up, uh, like a family-friendly disc golf tournament.
Yeah.
Um, I'll get with the, uh, guys who, Indian Trail and Union County who put on all the time.
Don't you think that'd be a good idea to show, show it off and just have, just, e- even if it's not like a, not a tournament, but just like.
An expo.
Yeah, yeah.
Exhibition.
And are you, I know this is not on topic, but are you, are you opening that on Tuesday?
No.
Oh, no, not, okay.
We, we might have one hole set up for promotional purposes, but no.
Okay.
All right, Christina, I have you for nature walks and T-shirts logo.
Good.
Bob, garden and art tours, and I had food trucks and ice cream.
Uh, ice cream.
Ice cream, no food truck?
No food truck.
Got me for equine and high school.
High school.
Now, you, now, we're mentioning using Marvin Elementary though as a launching spot for the run, family fun run.
For the start, yeah.
So should I reach out to them too?
Derek already has.
Just handle the school.
He's good.
Yeah, I got that.
Okay.
Um, Kim, you're gonna reach out to Firethorn as a backup location.
I'm gonna wait.
Okay.
'Cause I've already talked to Firethorn, they're, they're, they're all in to be involved, to do something, like they definitely want to, to be involved, so I'm, I'll wait until John knows, 'cause instead of muddying up the waters.
Yeah.
Just wait.
And then the Raptor Center.
Yep.
Jamie is the band guy. Joe is the car show guy.
Yep.
Whether he delegates or not.
Yep.
I don't have Andy or Bob for anything.
Okay, Bob said he'd help with the car stuff, but, um, we can put, we'll put Andy on food trucks.
What's Dan doing?
Huh?
He was helping him with the five K, but there isn't one now, so, don't know.
Oh, we'll put Dan on the food trucks. He likes.
He likes Andy, so.
I know, we'll put Dan on food trucks. See, if you're not here.
But that's gonna be part until we get a date too.
Oh, yeah. It will, yeah. All right, guys, I gotta go, I'm sorry, um, thank you, guys.
I think we're about done.
Okay, um, I will talk to Joe and get you that guy's name and, so, thanks, everybody, good meeting.
Bye, Kim.
Bye. Derek, do you need me to do anything else? Let me have.
Do we need to close it, or do you?
You don't need to accuse me, 'cause I'm not a.
Yeah.
Okay.
Derek, just a quick question. How comfortable, I wanna go ahead and try to walk him the ice cream trucks, and I know it's a long way out, but I want to see, get up with this guy. How comfortable are you with Major Twenty-Four? Do you think that's gonna be the date?
I don't know, Bob. I, I would think so, in some form.
It depends on the school.
It's gonna be the school, or it's gonna be the biggest thing.
So when would, when would we?
It could also be how committed we are to.
To that thing.
To insisting that we have to have that type of event there.
At the end of the day.
Yeah, 'cause I was gonna throw out the idea, it's maybe logistically impossible, but what if we had it at the Newtown Hall, and we like shut down part of this road for parking, and people had to like walk over to the new, new village hall? I don't know if that's.
Yeah, I, I, for, for a number of hours on a, I, I think that'd be pretty challenging, you know? Um, but, uh.
I don't know if the Dara, the neighborhoods would let us park there, Providence Downs or the gates or, you know, at the school, but.
I don't really wanna contact the ice cream guy, Derek, until.
Until we have a date.
He's hoping he's gonna have it though.
By, by next week.
Okay.
Yeah, so it's not too.
Oh, that's fine.
Yeah.
That's, that was my.
I'm just saying, it's, it, without having spoken to the new principal yet and him just coming in at this monsoon.
That's no issue.
And so, yeah, I'm, if I don't hear from him in the next day or so, I'll, I'll, I'll reach out again and try to get something back Tuesday.
Sounds good.
Did you have something else to do?
Oh, well, I was just gonna say, um.
Uh, I think I heard you just.
Potentially closing the road, I mean, I can look into that, but at the same time, suggesting if we can find alternate places to park, looking at, I mean, just a volunteer like shuttle service or something, I mean, just having somebody.
We, we, we used to do that for these events, where we would have people park at the high school and shuttle them to the park. And the shu- it was like three or four buses that just ran back and forth the whole time, and it was like, back then, ten years ago, it was twelve thousand dollars, you know?
But the other problem is, if there is, we will probably be able to use the high school if there isn't another event going on, right? I mean, most likely, and if there is another event going on, us parking there is gonna be the problem.
Yeah.
Right? I mean, it's not just using the space, but.
Well, and it depends on what the event is, 'cause some of the events might not need much parking, and you could use the parking on the backside, but there's a lot of parking around the high school.
Twelve thousand dollars is crazy.
Oh, yeah, for, for, for shuttling.
That's a lot of sponsors.
Yeah.
Well, I don't know, Bob, you know, he's.
How much, how much money, that's the question real quick. How much money is Marvin allocating to Marvin Day?